Good evening and welcome to 2025's version of Montpelier Civic Forum. And we have a really interesting show tonight. We're going to have one of the candidates for the contested District 2 race. And this is the incumbent, Palin Kohn.
Hi, thank you for inviting me.
Inviting you the second time. You were on the first time when you were running the first time. Or when you were appointed, right after you were appointed.
Yeah, I think we did the talk, but I don't remember recording, so this is, this is good.
This is good. And basically, I'm gonna walk you through an introduction to Palin Kohn and her perspective. We have had Mark, we have a show with Mark Gwynn on, so you can sit and watch both shows. And I would encourage you, if you're in District 2, to watch both shows. Now, one thing is that this is being filmed after the decision was made on Bill's tenure. But that really doesn't reach into this. But it's good to know both Mark and Palin were filmed after that. What part of District 2 do you live in?
Yeah, I live in Westwood Drive. It is like off of the Tom Hill Road. Yeah, so it's a very nice neighborhood.
District 2 is a very peculiar neighborhood. And it ranges to Murray Hill, it ranges to your area, it goes all the way down to Berry Street of LA, yes?
Yeah, and especially when you start knocking doors, you realize that, oh my gosh, like so many houses. It's a huge density of residential areas, so yeah, it's, it's a big, big district.
And it ranges all the way from College Avenue down to my section over by Jay and, and in that area. And you just get a wide swath of socio-economic.
Yes, that's right. So we serve a really diverse population of Montpelier in District 2.
You've been knocking on doors. What's the concern you're hearing?
So, most people, because I am also on the city council before my campaign, right? That's why I always talk to people during our monthly listening session, when they wanna have coffee with me, when they email, phone call, and also I was collecting my signatures for the petition, right? To be on the ballot. That's why I did additional door knocking. And the most concern I've heard is using city sources, especially financial sources, efficiently. So people are aware that next maybe five years will be very tight for all towns, even state level, national level. So everybody was like, okay, what are your plans about budget? And what, what are your plans about using our city resources like more efficiently? And also other things about infrastructure, right? So whoever drives or walks, you know, you can feel, it is fun, like it is very bumpy. So it's like always like adventure every day. But also, we have a aging city and aging infrastructure. So it is very important to deal those things. And also, the third thing is, people are asking, okay, what is the like a vision of this town, right? What we wanna go forward? What should we do? Because everything is changing, including Montpelier, especially after the flood.
Palin, I asked this of everyone. I'll ask it to be, I probably asked it to be last time we spoke. Is Montpelier a town or a city?
City, yeah, it is city, but kind of, I think, talking about our town, right? Because we support each other so much and it, it feels like we are a kind of a big family. Maybe that's why sometimes we use town and city like interchangeably. But if you go to like, I think, legal records, we are a city.
Right, but it's a small city and it's a small town.
Yeah.
What do you do for a living? Besides the few thousand that we pay you, which isn't enough to sit on city council?
I work for a community college of Vermont. I am a student advising, a part of the student advising team there. So I started working for them four months ago. So before that, I used to teach. So I have a PhD in administration and planning or leadership. That's why I used to work with, when I was in Turkey, I moved here from Turkey. I'm Turkish-American. So I used to have my consultant company and I was an executive coach. And I also used to give, you know, classes at the college level. Then we moved here in 2017. I didn't do that job. I focused on the percent like teaching at the college level. And now I am at the CCV and advising students. Now, I'm not teaching, but like having a relationship with students and help them with their academic and future plans.
Now, when you came into council, you were appointed, right?
Yeah.
And then you ran?
Yes.
And it was when you ran that we spoke. What was your first experience on council try? What were you trying to get done when you stepped forward and said, I wanna be on council? When you're elected, there's a council retreat right afterwards. And everyone sits around the table and they say, this is what I think I would like to see done. What did you say? What were you trying to do during your first term?
Yeah, so when I first moved here, I just wanna be part of the community and I start volunteering. I volunteer for different projects, including one of the city committee. I was at the Social Justice and Economic Advisory Committee. So I already knew the city, like city councilors and everything. Then I attended a leadership program. I was a scholar. It's called Leaders Council. And we had to make a capstone project to graduate. And my capstone project was how immigrant people can be involved in municipal government. So I did lots of research. I talked to lots of like city councilors, also nonprofits who help this, who help with this goal. And after, you know, completing that capstone, my cohort started, Palin, you know all the details. And this is your passion. Why don't you try? I said, no, actually. Then I saw that there's an opportunity to be appointed and I apply. Then after two or three months, I ran for my first term. My biggest idea or like passion being on the council is to make Montpelier more inclusive. Because Montpelier population, we have only 2.7 people out of the population like me who were born outside of the United States. But they are Montpelier residents and also they are American citizens. And the city council by then, and still, there are like represented 97% of Montpelier population, but not rest. So that's why I just wanna be there, be at the table, be a part of the decision-making process. So I can be voice of that people who are like me.
Now, every council person has to sit on a committee or an organization. I believe you're Montpelier Alive?
Yeah, I'm on the Montpelier Alive board. I represent city. I am also on the homelessness task force. I am also at the Center for Justice. And the youth committee, I initiated with the support of city council recently. So I'm serving four of them and trying to be there and represent city council and create a bridge. On the homelessness task force, Sal Alfonso, and I both of us serve on that committee.
Ironically, on Montpelier Alive, your opponent Mark Gwynn is also on that board.
I know him from our meetings.
When do you have time at home if you're sitting on all those committees?
Yeah, so like being a woman with like, I know men also have the same responsibilities. But like, when you're a woman, suddenly the expectation is different from you. So working full-time, 84-plus, serving on city council. And I also do volunteer job. I serve other nonprofit organization executive.
And on Sunday, you rest.
Yeah, so I try to, and luckily, what my PhD taught me, great time management. Because like you have to work or study. Because when you're an academician or PhD student, you don't have any like a specific time for this. That's why I know how to manage my time. And I try to spend time with my family during Sundays. Because Saturdays, I meet with District 2 residents and we have our monthly sessions. So Saturday is also a part of my city council job.
You and Sal do that together?
Yes, yes, we co-host, yeah. Yeah, I initiated the first one. And I remember when I was appointee, I started this listening session and you were the only one came the first one. And one person, and I think you were running for a mayor that time. And then after that, like I continued when Sal came on the board. I, I told him, do you wanna do this with me? Because it's such, and he was like, we are a great team. And he's very supportive. We work so well. And now we co-host those monthly sessions together.
And they're well-populated?
Yeah, so it has like for last two years, every month, like we, I don't know, we made, I think, at least 24 times. And it changes sometimes based on the season. Like we have a lot of people during budget season or circle, whatever you call. And then we have lots of people when there's like a very big decision will be made. And people are very interested and they just like check the agenda and everything. And they come and talk with us. But it is not only that monthly sessions. Like I think people find me very approachable, which is great. And I talk to people from other districts too. And like districts are just for voting purposes, right? We are all neighbors. So I talk to people non-stop and I'm very happy about that because they, they find me very approachable, so.
What's a town's strength? In talking about Montpelier, I was sitting on the board, on Montpelier Alive's board. What is the strength of Montpelier that we should be marketing? If I were coming in from somewhere else and I were to say, well, I've got my family, you know, and I was thinking about Montpelier, what would you say to them?
Yeah, I think we have a great sense of belonging and a great sense of community. And we like doing things collectively. That's why one of the things I wanna do on the city council, which is happening and seeing it very nice for me, is the collective leadership. So like six different individuals are coming, including Mayor Seven. Yes, everybody has their own ideas, everybody has their own passion. But in the end, we serve for Montpelier and we need to lead Montpelier collectively. And the cultural being here, like part of the community, when somebody needs help, everybody supports. And it is like such as you said, small town and small city, everybody knows everybody. So when you ask for something, you know that people are there for you. So I think that's the, that's the best quality. And that's why I really like living here, especially when you raise kids, like safety, right?
Do you have kids?
Yeah, I have two kids.
Public schools?
Yeah, yeah, they've been in the Montpelier schools. My daughter is at Smith College now. She's 18, she's a freshman. And my son is 16 at Montpelier High School junior, he's a junior.
What's your experience been with our schools?
Yeah, actually, when we moved back here from Turkey, when my husband got a job here, we did check different towns. And we ended up deciding to live in Montpelier because of the school system. So we really did our research. And since we have like, my kids were, one of them were in the sixth grade and the other in fourth grade. That's why school system was very important for us. I think one of the like the most important reason we decided to leave here is our school system. And my kids are really, they, they are enjoying a lot. They love their teachers, they love their peers. But coming from Turkey and just like being outsider for a while, I think it will be great, people just welcome new people. But at the same time, we can still do lots of things about being more inclusive.
I'm gonna walk you through some issues.
Yeah.
Country Club Road.
Yeah.
That, the Oaks Club, very, very large project. Twenty, I think this will be the 25th anniversary of the vote to purchase Saban's past year for 700,000. Obviously, we never did. Nothing's there. Do you feel that in the next five years, 10 years, something is going to, housing will appear up there?
Yeah, it depends how we work on it. So when I started the council, I, I kept hearing, oh, it will be like two, two years, then three years, five years. Now we are saying 10 years, right? Suddenly, oh, seven years too, like five years, seven years, then 10 years. So every year, because of the, all the changes happening, the timeframe is getting like bigger. So I think we should start talking with developers as soon as possible. So I believe that as a city, we can help with the infrastructure. We can get ready the land for the developers. But we are, city is not a developer. So that's why we should start talking now, right now, right? And like we should learn what they are plan, what they, and even if you can prepare some part of it and like work with a one specific developer and they can do something. And people say, oh, look, there is something here actually. There is a feature and it is working. So my personal opinion on that, like we should start talking to developers as soon as possible.
Market determines price.
Yeah.
You know, we can't, city council can't say, oh, these houses will be this much. Do you believe that these houses will be affordable to young people in, in Montpelier?
I have been talking with different people. And my idea is also to start talking local nonprofits. And I've been doing that. So there is different need. Like I think all the discussion I've been engaging, I've learned that there are a good amount of work to create like a high level of housing for like people who have money. And also people who have not that much money, like low-income people. But there is a missing gap in the middle, like middle class, like me, right? People who don't do like six figures, but they wanna still live Montpelier. So that's why it is very important to decide which path we wanna take. So everything is changing. The prices are like inflation rate, like everything. So what is affordable really based on what kind of conditions we have that time? So from now, it is very difficult to tell, for me to say, like 10 years later, those houses will be affordable. But we can start working on it to make them affordable. And I think bringing developers in, talking to local nonprofit, and also like just, okay, we wanna close this gap or we wanna do the like houses for low-income people or we wanna create houses for like people who have all the money. So we have to make, we have to make the decision.
This one was a less publicized one when we were trying to develop housing. What happened to Isabel Circle? Why did that not get the public subsidy that, that they sought?
Yeah, I think in the end, city staff decided that the policy we have is not good enough to go with. So they just wanna make some changes. And they just wanna be sure that it will not cost more to taxpayers. So it's, I think there is a potential to have something there. But we, city council, we have to be very careful how much that will cost to taxpayers. Because in the end, again, like even if like private like developers will help to do something, you are talking about the last case, that's what I am referring, to build the buildings and do the marketing. Still, as a city, we need to do the like fundamental job. So that's why what happened, we, we decided that we need to step back and look at the policies and be sure that it will not cost a lot of money to taxpayers to support this kind of projects.
So now, again, I'm gonna go way into the weeds. It was a surety bond that says that they would do what they're promising to do. And I believe there was a gap between what council felt they wanted for protection if the project didn't work and what they were offering. Am I saying it correctly?
Yeah, that's why we said, okay, we wanna do this, but we wanna be careful at the same time. We don't wanna create like more binding issues to Montpelier residents. That's why we said, okay, let's think about, go back, check the policies, check what we can do. And city staff did a great job. They talked to banks, they talked to insurance. And we decided, okay, let's pause this year. And if you wanna do something, then we can do something that we can protect Montpelier residents in a better way.
You spoke about roads. I believe that there's 700,000 in the budget for roads this year, I believe.
Yeah, we tried to put like more and we tried not to cut anything. And also, if local option sale tax passes, we said that first 100,000 dollars will go to public works. So we are trying to make their budget higher, if we could, yeah.
Now, the local options tax were to pass. Montpelier Alive was taken out of the core budget where it's always been and was placed into the local options tax. And then 100,000 on top of that was put into infrastructure, leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars unspoken for.
Yeah.
Do you see that money going into roads?
Yeah, definitely. And I think it's also, we need to have public input, right? And when we are talking about if this tax like passes, it will be, I think, active in a couple of years. It's not happening right away. That's the one thing. Second, the estimate is we can get like between 500,000 and 600,000 from that.
Which leaves over 400,000 unspoken for.
Yeah, so.
Where would you wanna see that? Some people, I think the mayor said we could rehire people back. Other people have said roads. Where do you see it going?
Yeah, personally, I wanna see it in the infrastructure, public safety, all the core services we provide to our. And also, we are talking about rec department, right? So maybe we will, we will start talking about that too. I don't know. Public input very important because public should have a voice to use that money, where they wanna see, what kind of services. But personally, I wanna use them for core services, public safety, public works, and also, you know, infrastructure. But I will be more comfortable just saying the specific things when we have the money. Now, it is like just like, oh, if we have the money, we will do that. But like ideally, yeah, I wanna use it for infrastructure and core services.
Let's get to infrastructure. When we talk about up at Country Club Road, we're talking, or over at Isabel Circle, we're talking about putting in new roads, we're talking about putting in new water, we're new sewer, new lighting. What about the core city? We have, this winter has been brutal for, again, for pipes bursting. And our core, do you feel comfortable that we're putting enough into our core downtown? And that we're addressing water pressure as it should be addressed? How would you change that?
Yeah, not yet. So I don't think we are really, because the infrastructure thing, again, I told like, we have aging town, right? It is very nice, lots of historical buildings, but also our infrastructure is historical too. So that's why it is important to provide enough budget. Because when we talk to a public work department and when Kurt, like department had, makes all this presentation, they are working so hard, they are understaffed. And like everything they are trying to do, the prices are going up, right? They start a project that in the middle of it, inflation goes up, prices goes up. And suddenly, the money, and they are getting lots of funds too. They are writing grants, they are really working very hard. But suddenly, they cannot keep up with the prices. So for me, all the observation and all the presentation I listen and all the talking, yeah, we need to be sure that we have a bigger budget for infrastructure. And it is not only, we can always tie, right? Oh, if we have a good business development ideas for our downtown, we can have money from there, right? If we can just like create other revenue generation ideas, we can have money from that there. So unfortunately, the answer for the infrastructure improvement is good budget and enough staff.
The area next to the art store, between the art store and the grocery store, is still not spoken for. We put it out to bid and it seems like no one has taken the interest at the price that we're asking. Berry, on the other hand, is giving away those kinds of properties for a dollar. Now, Berry is eating up the rest. What do you advocate for that area next to? I mean, everybody knows what they want it to be. They want it to be mixed retail with, with housing above. What, what would you do? I mean, the private sector has said, we don't wanna pay that for it. But if we sell it for very low or give it away, then we're eating, I think, several hundred thousand dollars. What, what's your thought on that?
So I always think that, I think collaborations are very important. So not only talking like one sector, like we should start talking about other sectors. Like, yeah, we talk about like private sector, how about talking with the state agencies, right? Or nonprofits? So just try to have more ideas instead of going after one idea. So it is, again, we can start talking about it because it seems like it's kind of a dead end right now. But we can always start talking about and discussing various ideas and decide which will be the best for our town.
Homelessness. You sit on the homeless task force. You've been on the homeless task force for a while. Is your feeling that the current, if we were to build a rec center? Now, we're a foot above the ground saying that we're actually going to build a new rec center. Do you favor building a homeless shelter across from the senior center and next to a church?
So it is, again, there are so many discussions. And it is important, like I go back and say the same thing, but public input. Like now, we have input from homelessness task force and we have input from city, right? And they say like churches ask for like a weekend shelter. They said, can we open the city hall? And city staff said, we don't have enough staff and this is not really safe for people to be here. So we have this, you know, ideas and perspectives from stakeholders. But we, we don't have public input again. Do people, like Montpelier residents, downtown businesses, do they wanna see a shelter there, right? So I think we haven't done our research completely yet. That's why if we wanna go with that project, if you wanna go after that idea, we have to include more people because now we have only a couple of stakeholders.
What would you do about the bicycle lanes on Berry Street that were decided years ago? Would you open up that process again?
We haven't discussed it like recently, so I don't know how people are thinking. But I was meeting with middle schoolers two weeks ago because four middle school girls, they were interested in applying for the youth committee. And they mentioned to me, they said, oh, you know, Palin, my mom doesn't send me there, like, because it's not safe. Apparently, youth wants to see something there. So yeah, I think we should talk about, and safety is the big issue, right? So maybe it is, we, we are having so many other issues right now. We haven't come that yet. But since, you know, this you, like a youth group told me, oh, we wanna use that. Okay, I started, maybe it is time to go back and start this discussion.
What also, I didn't even get to the youth group because I don't think about the youth group. What are their thoughts on Montpelier in terms of change? Besides, they'd probably like to see more dances and. Besides, they'd probably like to see more dances and more action for for young people. What what else are they concerned about?
On the youth committee, we have five members now appointed by the city council, four high school students and one middle school. And originally, the proposal includes seven members. So we are still looking for two more members. Hopefully, it will come from middle school, so we will have the good representation. So we had our first meeting on February thirteenth. And it was very interesting because I asked them, right? What are, why did you apply for this committee? Why you wanna, because they are the first ones, right? And they said, representation is very important. So their voice should be there when city makes like future plans. And they also said that they wanna learn how municipal government is working. They live here, but they don't know. So maybe more communication, right, with youth? And also in my, like, not in the committee meeting, but like my private conversation, they wanna see change in their local election voting age, they wanna make it sixteen, like Bredal Bro. Because they they told me, and they are so sweet, they told me, Pelin, like when we are eighteen, we leave for college. So we won't be here, so why not making the age sixteen, then we can, we can have more voice? So these are the general, yeah.
There are students on the on the school board and there've been students for a while on the school board. Did any of them express an interest to have students on city council?
Actually, I haven't heard any specific interest. Maybe it's the next steps, right? If we change the, if the youth committee can change the voting age to sixteen, if they are voting, probably they wanna see someone like themselves.
Well, there are non-voting members on the school board. Was there, has there ever been any thought on council of having non-voting students?
Yeah, actually, when we talk about this youth committee establishment, yeah, I just like talk everyone and we did some kind of discussion and, yeah. And we, we might have kind of a youth council or something in addition to city. So there are so many different ideas. But I think the best thing for us to listen youth committee members and to learn what they wanna do. So that's, that's, I think, first thing we should do.
Council has been called dysfunctional. The meetings go on and on and on. And they're on Orca, by the way, you can watch them go on and on and on. But the meetings go on and on and on, issues are pushed off, decisions are pushed off to the next meeting. There are special meetings and decisions are pushed off. And basically, it was, the budget discussion was torture, watching that unfold. What is going on with council? How could council become more functional than it is right now? And return back to meetings that were timely, decisions that were made and a budget process that that is less chaotic? What, you've been sitting on council now, what's wrong?
Yeah, so I would say that it is functional, like, yeah, it takes like longer times. Of course, I cannot talk on behalf of all the city council members. But personally, what I observe is, I think if we do, which I mentioned this in couple of the city council meetings, like publicly, I think we, usually we make a decision, then we go back and try and make a plan. So it should be reverse, we need to have a plan first, then we can make a decision. Then it will go very like, not quickly, but like faster, right? And another thing, I am one of the city councilor who has been talking about strategic plan. I think we need to have a better, clear and shorter strategic plan everybody can understand. Because strategic plan ties to everything, it ties to our city council meetings, it ties to our budgets, it ties to our core services, like it's everything, our vision, our mission. So if we have a clear strategic planning, maybe when people watch our meetings, they will have a sense of, yeah, this meetings are more functional. So I think that's my solution, just go back and revise our strategic plan because it ties everything we do at the city council meetings.
When do you and Sal meet with District Two people and where?
Yeah, so every last Saturday of the month, we meet at ten AM at the senior center. So our February meeting will be tomorrow.
Now, you have to say when tomorrow is because this.
Tomorrow, yeah.
It will have happened by the time this shows.
Tomorrow is March twenty, oh, sorry, February twenty-second. We will meet at ten AM at senior center.
And there's no agenda, it's just people coming in?
So how we do this, people come in and we ask them what issues they wanna discuss. So every individual say, oh, I am Pelin, I wanna talk about affordable housing, right? Then I take notes, Sal also takes notes. Then based on the, like a counting, like if someone says like five times, if five people says like, oh, we wanna talk about budgeting, then we start talking about that. And our job, that's our model, we just there to listen. So we don't like say, oh, no, this is the happening. We just listen, take notes. If people ask us our ideas, we answer. And then we ask, okay, what do you want us to do next? Sometimes they say, oh, could you please talk to this person? And we do email those residents and explain what happened after we acted on this issue. Sometimes they just say, okay, we just wanna share this ideas in your next meeting, could you please mention this? We do that. So it's really residents' land and the meeting for residents, so.
If I were to email a concern to you, what would happen next? Well, what's the process when when someone in District Two sends you an email?
So what I do, if I know the answer, I explain it. Sometimes they ask my personal like ideas or something, oh, we heard this, what do you think, right? If I don't know the answer, because I don't wanna send something kind of misleading, I tell the person, I reply to it, I will ask this to this department. I will ask this to city, whatever the issue is, I go and ask the right unit. Then when they give me the answer, sometimes they say, oh, we can talk to that person. Then great, they reach out to them and explain. Sometimes they say, oh, these are the answer, these are the documents, these are the links you can share with. Then I go back and I share. If they wanna talk to me individual, like in person, then I follow up that. So that's the standard or like my way of dealing with the emails.
Sitting on council, what do you feel has been your greatest success? What do you feel the most pride in doing in your year and some odd?
Yeah.
On council?
First of all, I am one and only diverse member of city council. This is so important to me. Because when I moved here like seven years ago, I didn't know anyone. I didn't have any network, any friends. And now as an immigrant woman, I'm on the city council. Again, I am only and one diverse city council member. In addition to that, I think my, one of the things I'm very happy, I created talking to residents with this monthly sessions. And again, I'm so happy, Sal is so supportive, we are doing together. But we did this now, people wanna talk to us, they know. Like, and we have an email list, right, District Two email list. And I announced it on the front porch forum and people said, oh, please add me that list. And we, I take notes, I create meeting minutes, I send them to them. And then we create a communication in addition to our city email addresses. We have a real community among District Two people.
What's the greatest frustration besides not having enough time with your family? Because you're sitting on so many committees.
Yeah, the, again, like I've mentioned this couple of times. I think we need to plan things before making decision. And also, I really wanna see having public input before making decision. So so far, some of the things, not all of them, I observed that like we make a decision, then go and ask stakeholders, what do you think about it? But it should be reverse, we should ask everybody, then take their concern, issues, ideas to the city council and make our decision based on that data, right? So far, again, not all of them, but some of the issues, I feel like we make the decision, then we go back and ask people, what do you think about it? Give us your input, but it is already done, right? So I wanna see that process more and it will, it will create more transparency. And it will create like more positive approach and a, and a, like a more inclusive tone that city council is sharing with the, with the Montpelier residents.
Pelin, thank you for coming and being with us, I appreciate. And to all of you that are watching, watch the other ones, all of these are good. The the city budget, the school budget with Libby was a good one, all of them are very, very good. Go out of your way and watch them, but make sure you go and vote. And that doesn't mean voting on town meeting day, you can vote ahead of time by absentee ballot. But weigh in because elections do have consequences and your vote does matter. Thank you.